April 8th, just so you know before we begin that the regular meeting will follow this workshop, workshop center session when we're finished. So you have lots of time to answer questions and get your answers, okay? As I look around the table, we have one person not at the table, but on the telephone. So Councilman Campbell, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for calling in. I know how difficult it can be. We really appreciate it. So on the agenda items tonight, we'll go to three point one, and that's Katie Wilken. We'll present a report on the Goodyear General Plan, open house meetings held in February and March, and an update on Goodyear Connect website. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, I want to apologize. I'm getting over a little bit of cold, so I'm going to try and make it through this without coughing. But we just wanted to meet with you briefly and let you know how the open house meetings went that we held in February and March. Overall, they were a great success. We had over 150 residents attend the three meetings. And although that sounds like a small number when you talk to other communities, it is hard to get people out to meetings with busy schedules. So we were very excited. I also received a great compliment about Goodyear residents. The Parks Consultant and the Transportation Consultant and ADOT were also in attendance at these meetings. So these are people who attend these kind of meetings all the time, and they were just very impressed with the turnout from our residents and then how much participation they got into and how long they stayed. They really noted that our residents really seem invested and involved, and so much so to note it to me. So I just thought I'd share that with you. It's really great to hear. So we had the meeting set up as obviously open house style where we had booths around the room and people could visit each booth at their leisure. And I just want to kind of go through the information we provided and some of the results we saw. When they first walked in, we just had some really quick facts about Goodyear to share with them. And then the first thing we did was we had a map up where people could tell us where in the community they lived. And we had a pretty even split. About 30% were north, about 30% were in central Goodyear, and 40% were south or the Austraia area. That does not match up with our current demographics, but it at least gives us the information and we could see what neighborhoods are represented. So we can see if there are neighborhoods where we maybe need to do some different outreach. On the demographic side, we had a pretty good representation for different types of families. Almost half were single or couples that don't have children in the home. About 20% were families that do have children in the home, and about 30% identified as retired empty nesters. Obviously, this doesn't necessarily describe-
When I was reading this, I got off of just the people that attended that. And I'm looking at these. Did anybody else do that, looking at the percentage? I went, whoa, did we have ours off? So it's nice to know that this was actually from the people that were in attendance. So when people look at this slide in itself, they could interpret that maybe our demographics have changed a little bit, but they really haven't.
No, about currently, about 40% of our residents are in families with children in the home. So again, this doesn't accurately represent, but it just gives us the information of who we need to keep reaching out to, who we might not be hearing from enough.
But I will make a mention that I think 48% were single with no children. And you know, a lot of the people that are busy like that and that are professionals, I'm not sure they're all registered to vote. That would have been interesting to find out that at that time, because we do have such a huge segment of our population that doesn't vote. So interesting enough.
Yeah, we could have had a registered to vote booth.
Yeah, I should have thought of it.
Yeah. So the first booth was, we just basically asked, you know, what makes a great place? What could make Goodyear an even better place? And this is just a little word cloud. The, you should have received a packet of information that has all the detailed comments, if you'd like to go through those. And of course, the General Plan Committee are going to be going through those and figuring out how to incorporate those into the general plan. But the bigger the word appears on the word cloud, the more often it was said. So you can just see that light rail and bike paths are on people's minds right now. And then I think the other thing is just destinations, restaurants, shopping, places to go, and things to do. We also, this is just an example, had these big boards out where people could just write on the boards. We had asked questions like what makes a great neighborhood, what makes a great park system, and people could write really lengthy responses on there. And again, you can see people filled these up, and we shared all those with you, too. And then we just had some brief information about what is a general plan, what the purpose of it is, and the outreach we've done so far. One of the biggest portions was the land use section. The land use plan is, you know, one of the most important parts of the general plan, and people usually want to know what's going to be near their homes. So this was us throwing up the land use plan. And also on the right there, you can see a growth and development map. We are required to have a growth areas element in our general plan, too. So we kind of showed people those gray areas are where we're already developed and asked people, where do you think development should occur in the city? We didn't get many comments on the land use plan itself. A lot of people were more interested in the transportation side than the land use side. But on the growth areas, you can see some highlights from the map. Most people were showing areas, again, it kind of reflects the comments. They want to see commercial growth. The red was commercial, blue was residential. And so I think they're just looking for more shopping and restaurants and entertainment opportunities. And the other interesting thing to note, and someone even wrote a comment that nobody was saying we should be growing in the southern portions. They were kind of showing that growth should happen where current development already is. We also threw up our vision statement that we presented to you a couple months ago and asked for comments on it. 92% of the people who voted said they agreed with the vision statement. Some of the comments we received on it were not so much on the content of the statement, but you know, on the length, that maybe it's more of a mission statement.
Notice that quite a few comments, it won't be memorable. You need something shorter.
Yeah. So it made me happy that, you know, they didn't agree with, they agreed with the sentiment, but I think also maybe with some of the branding, I think you guys are working on, and the strategic plan, that there might be other opportunities to create that short statement of what the city is. On the neighborhoods and housing, we asked the question, you know, what elements are most important to include in the neighborhood? And we just came up with some of the things that we often hear about. And by far, including parks, including sidewalks or trails, and creating connections to commercial areas. And on the board, we actually said, you know, connections to areas like coffee shops or restaurants were the most important thing, aspects to people. I was surprised about schools, but then I also was thinking that some of the age restricted communities probably don't need a school as part of their neighborhood as much, and it probably-
48% were without children, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the economic development booth, we asked first, you know, what businesses would you like to see come in? And we weren't surprised with the results, you know, the mall being number one, Trader Joe's we often hear about, and movie theater was also a big one. But then we also asked what they thought we should do to increase jobs and get businesses here. And there were some really great ideas, a lot we're already thinking about and doing, but it was just great to hear some of those ideas from the residents. On the infrastructure and services, we put up information from the citizen survey that's conducted every couple of years that ranked how people felt about how we provide services, and also identified what the most important services are, new services to provide are. And we just kind of asked people, do you agree with what the citizen survey said? What else would you have to add? And the major comments we got were, you know, they want to see light rail. They want, there were some problems with traffic lights. They want to see bus service. And then I kind of put the last one all together. There's lots of comments about some kind of community center, basically to wrap it up.
Just on the light rail, were they realistic on their thoughts about when they thought that would come about?
We just didn't get into those kind of details about that. But I was impressed by, I don't think there was so many more light rail comments than bus service comments. And to me, people saying that they want bus service, too, seems that they're kind of being a little more realistic that maybe that comes first, and then we get to the light rail. Also, as part of the infrastructure and services, we put up a map where people could identify areas in the city where they feel especially safe that we might want to emulate, and areas of the city where maybe they don't feel so safe. And it, you know, we said it could be due to anything, traffic, the environment, actual crime. And I just highlighted a couple little areas. You can see Van Buren Street from the comments. I heard from people, I think it's mostly due to pedestrian safety and the suicide turn lane. That's a little unsafe. So that's one little area of the community that might not be-
Jo's asking where that is.
Suicide turn lane?
Along Van Buren, east of Litchfield Road, between Litchfield Road and Dyce Art.
Oh, okay.
That's the area that seems to have the most red dots.
Isn't that between that and Dyce Art and north, I guess McDowell, aren't those two of the most unsafe lights around in the area? I thought I saw something about that.
I don't know the statistics, but, and I know it's challenging. I don't even know if it's Avondale or Goodyear who maintains that area.
Well, Dyce Art being Avondale.
Yeah. And then some of the other areas in Austraia, some of it was due to lighting, you know, that when they're walking, low light, you know, the low lighting is beautiful and helps you see the stars.
Yeah, that did pop up quite a few times during this timeframe. And have we publicized it when we initiated, you know, we had the consultant and we did the low lighting and we did all the studies and stuff? That's what the, they chose for this. So that concerns me, because I don't know how we can prove upon it if that's the direction that we decided to take, or if you can enhance areas even though it's low lighting, or what is the, what is the actual name of all of that? Wasn't there some programs?
The dark sky.
Dark sky, thank you, Joanne. Dark skies, go ahead.
Well, I was just guessing this one.
Yeah.
Yes, back to Austraia, that was original vision of Charlie Keating when he developed that to have the low lights. So we, and that's Austraia Mean Star. And that was part of the whole vision of having it be a dark sky so you could see the stars and enjoy the quiet evenings, if you will. Those lights are actually owned by the homeowners association. They are not owned by the city, and that's another important point as well. So we don't maintain those. We maintain electricity to them, but they are actually part of the HOA.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Katie, I'm interested in the red dot at Cotton Lane in Austraia. Do people have a lot to say about the roundabout there?
I didn't hear a lot of comments specifically about that, but I, you know, it's obviously pointing toward the roundabout, I would think this dot is.
Now, is that just, is that a single person put a dot there? Is that how that-
Yeah, one dot is one person. But, you know, other people might have said, oh, someone else already put the dot there. It's hard to know how many people feel that way, just from this.
Do you have this, will you have this information captured forever like this? Because this, I think, is going to be useful later, talking public safety or whatever.
Yes, we have this information saved, definitely. Thank you. For the environmental sustainability board, we asked the question, you know, and this can be challenging, we're required to have an energy component and environmental component in the general plan. Specifically, we asked, what should the city be doing in terms of these items? Renewable energy, natural, preserving natural resources, water conservation and energy conservation. And so these, we kind of put up a range there that, you know, do people think we should be requiring things be done, providing incentives, encouraging, or should we just be doing nothing? And so you can kind of see here that the preservation of natural resources was one of the most supported items that the city should be doing. And then I also saw that providing incentives for energy conservation. And then I also see a little bit on the water conservation side that seemed to be the areas that stuck out to me. And it, you know, I'm not surprised on the natural resources with the, with the mountains and the Gila River. We do have a lot of great resources.
Joanne?
I like that. Takes me back to my 1% for the environment, like we had the 1% for art. Someday, that could come true.
And then, as I said, the Parks and Recreation Consultant was there, and I don't have a lot of information for you there, because they're looking at all the information they receive themselves for their own studies. And I think they'll be before you to talk about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. But just, I, we did another little word bubble. But yeah, we're seeing a lot about pools and water for parks. And then, again, same thing on the transportation side. They'll be coming to you with their information after they have a chance to look through it. And then just another little word bubble there. But I know they've been hearing a lot about the light rail. They also discussed, heard a lot about the 303, a lot of questions. And that's why we had eight out at the meeting to help answer residents' questions. Finally, we had the mobile community meeting the next week, and this one we didn't hold as an open house style, but we had it more as a town hall type meeting. And a lot of the comments we received, you know, and the mayor and vice mayor were in attendance, so you know, weren't necessarily related to the general plan update. But, you know, we did hear some great comments about what recreation programs we might be able to do there that are scaled to the community.
They were quite excited about that. So that was incredible.
Yeah, it was really great. And, but then, of course, we heard a lot about the road maintenance and access to the area, a lot of questions about Sonoran Parkway. And then I just wrote down one resident I loved, that they said the stars are beautiful and the sunsets are great. But overall, too, I just saw a lot of heads nodding that, you know, they, they like the rural characteristic for right now. So whatever we can do to help preserve that, at least for that area.
Might be their, their mission statement up there, then. Very good.
So that's all I have on that portion. So then I'll move on. I just wanted to give you an update on how Goodyear Connects is going as well. So it's been two months since the launch. And as of today, I looked it up, we have 173 participants. This is interesting. 25% are women and 75% are men. So we're kind of skewed. The average age of participants are 48, is 48 years old. And it's a pretty even split between the two zip codes. On our participates, participants are pretty even participation. But just quickly, when you go to the Goodyear Connect site, this is what it looks like as a first time user. And then up at the top right, you can see there's a login. So this is me logged in. And then the screen changes slightly. But we just have a couple of questions up there. You know, the big one is, what's your big idea for the future of Goodyear? And so in our report, we shared some of those ideas with you that we've received so far. And just as an example of kind of how it's been working, is someone, you know, put up an idea, create an arts incubator. And you can see that it says refer to appropriate parties. So that's something I did behind the scenes, is I can tag the questions. And then you can see underneath, though, that other people are adding to the idea, saying, you know, saying, well, this is what I think about that idea, and this is what I think about that idea. And I really like it. Deb Robinson, who's on our general plan committee, commented. But it really shows, too, how when someone puts their picture on it, really, I really like that when they put their picture on it. It makes it more interactive. And here's another one that we actually got implemented. So you can see at the top, we said implemented, and we could even put the picture from the pickleball court grand opening on there and share all that information. And then you can see, I commented at the bottom, and you can see I'm highlighted in purple as a staff member. So other staff members, if we tag you correctly, or council members, we can tag you to show up that way. So it kind of highlights it so that the community kind of has that recognition that this is a staff member responding.
So what's the timeframe from the time that the suggestion came forth and you decided to change one of the tennis courts?
Well, I believe that the Parks and Recreation staff was already on top of it. I mean, this has only been launched for two months, and I think it just opened two weeks ago. So I mean, it was only like a month, month and a half.
That's pretty fast service.
It was very fast service, but I don't think Goodyear Connects can take all the credit. I think Nathan might have already been on top of the issue, but.
But it might be something you put in there on the comments, that when it first came to staff, and in the, really in the short period of time, they heard, and they performed, and now they have it.
No, this kind of stuff, I think, is really great to respond to people. They can see that we're listening, even if it was already in the works. Just responding, I think, helps a lot. And then just something else I did is-
Don't be afraid to toot our horn on this. If it's something that we, the staff has done and done well, and in a short period of time, we need to, we need to be expressing that.
Something else I just tried out is actually the report on the open house meetings. I just went ahead and put that up there on Goodyear Connects and asked people, you know, if they had additional comments, if they felt like we didn't capture their comments well. I also just think it's another way to let people know that we're listening. We got your comments. This is how they're going to be shared with council. But this is also just kind of a nice test, because as we create the chapters of the general plan, we'll be able to put them on Goodyear Connects, and people actually be able to comment on the chapters on there for everybody to see. And so hopefully, it's not, people aren't blindsided by this huge document at the end when we have a draft, but they can actually be looking at it as it's rolling out. But yeah, we actually got a couple of comments on, on it. So I think people were looking at it. And you can still get to it, too, from, this is the Goodyear 2025 website. So we've got it big and highlighted there so that people are being directed to it. And I know we just ordered some business cards and magnets, and so I think we're going to be getting those to you to help us distribute those and get people using it.
I'm sorry, maybe you already answered this question. How long are you going to have this going? Or is this something that we could continue even after, you know, we get the general plan finished? I mean, this sounds like a, something that's nice that we'll continue to build upon over the years, you know?
Thank you. Yeah, we have a one-year contract right now, and that's why I'm also working with Romina and her team on this, because they see that same potential. It's, we're kind of starting it with the general plan, parks plan, transportation plan. But if it's successful, then we'll continue using it, you know, whether it's with the same company or not, you know, so.
Like the logo.
And that's, well, and that's partly why Romina's team-
It does make you feel connected, looking at it.
Created more of a generic logo so that it's Goodyear Connects. It's not Goodyear General Plan. So we can continue to use it, hopefully. So right now, we're just looking for more people to get on it and start using it, because we are listening. We're getting good ideas from it. We're, we're looking at it. We're reading it. So we just hope people keep using it. But that's all I have. So I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Cherry?
I just want to make a comment. I think this is fabulous, what you've done, and you're going to watch it snowball. I have a feeling we're going to see lots and lots of what Joanne said, that it's going to be something that we can use later. So this is so great, because like you said, it's hard to get people to meetings. It's hard to get surveys, only get so much. So thank you so much for all your hard work. Joanne?
And just one suggestion, and maybe this is something that you're already doing, but I just haven't noticed. But if you continue to have that QR code and have that Goodyear Connects, you know, possibly have the link somehow, but in, in just about everything that we put out there, if it's in, in focus, in focus, if we Facebook it, if we tweet it, you know, so it continually is out there amongst people, that's how they're going to start to see about it, you know? If we, if we only show it occasionally, or if it's only on the website, people aren't going to, you know, continue to find it.
Good thoughts.
But you're, you're young. You should know that. You know that.
Jen?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate you. You've done such a good job with this. When we were in Washington DC, I took a leadership course on how to engage citizens. I brought back some notes on that. And the whole time, all I could think of was you and, and the great work that you've done, and every single thing that they recommended is what you did at these, you know, public seminars. So congratulations. I'm really proud of you. And question, were you able to provide childcare at any of these, or have like a kids area so that, you know, more families could attend and that kind of thing?
Thanks. At our visioning workshop in November, we advertised that we had childcare, and we actually had babysitter volunteers come, and we had one child come. So I didn't organize that whole thing, so we didn't advertise it this time. But a few people came with their kids. And I do wish there was a better way to say, you know, these are the kind of meetings, it's open house, you could have brought your kid. It's all right. We would have entertained them. But, so if anyone has any thoughts on how we could better-
You really need to advertise it. For the city center, we did it for that three-day charrette. And we had an area for children and it-
Childcare. And then the other question was, were you able to provide any transportation for people who might have had struggles getting to the meetings? Was that a possibility at all?
We didn't think of that at all.
Okay. So those were just a couple of the things, but great job, really good job.
Well, thanks. But I should say, you know, it's obviously not all me alone, especially Romina, Anna Garcia, and, and the communications team put a lot of effort into this, too.
Jo?
Just to follow up on what the vice mayor said, I'd like to see us continue using this kind of forum after the 2015 is done, because I think it's real important that they have a way of getting their message in. And again, I also agree, the more you can link it to a variety of things, you know, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, whatever, you'll get people. Because the important part is to find out. I know we do our surveys, but to get them engaged, and the more information we get, the better we'll be able to service what your needs are, so.
And they have to just keep seeing it.
Bill?
I could not agree more with, with Councilmember Pozzillo with the, the concept of Goodyear Connects as a year-round, not, not as an advertising, but as a place for us to get that feedback all year long, instead of through the, or in addition to the survey, which we said we were going to look at. So I, you know, I realize this, the focus is on the general plan, and all that work has been, obviously is, is evolving, but it looks to be very fruitful. I think the real issue is the Goodyear Connects piece and the success that we're potentially seeing here in the future for it. So, thank you, Katie.
Good. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes, yes, Wally.
I would like to say that I attended every one of the open houses and spoke with many of the residents that were there. They were very appreciative of our efforts of opening up, asking for comments on the general plan. They were very excited to be there. A few of the folks that I knew that had small children told me that either the husband was home feeding the children, or the wife was home, that they had just gotten home from work. But they enjoyed it. They're looking forward to hearing what we, as the city council, put forward for them to vote on. And it was very successful. And it is because of Katie's efforts and Romina and her team that Goodyear really put a foot forward that was wonderful for our community. And I want to thank everyone.
Thank you, Wally, for your comments. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. So we'll go now to 3.2, and Brian Dawkey and Terry Canada will present an update on the city's revenue projections for fiscal year 14.
Thank you, Mayor. And Terry's just arriving. We'll, we'll also have Larry Lang as part of this presentation when we get to the property tax portion. If we could get this presentation queued up.
Yeah, it takes me a minute. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the first of a series of budget workshops that we're going to have. Most of them are taking place over the dates in April. I'll get to the calendar in a minute. And then we'll do a draft budget the first week of May, and then we'll roll into the tentative and final adoption. Specifically, what we're going to review tonight is a little bit on the budget process and how we got here today. And then I'm going to remind you of the budget policies that we briefly discussed during the process, and outline the major revenue sources. And as Brian said, Larry's going to pick up on the tough stuff, and he'll talk about the property tax. So, again, this is a calendar. Like I said, we do have three dates coming up in April. We'll talk about expenditures and the CIP. We also have a budget, a public budget forum, which will be May 1st, pretty much review most of the information that we've talked to you as, to that date. And then we'll present the draft budget on the 6th of May. And again, the final legal requirements follow that. There's three more dates. With that, I wanted to step back in time a little bit. We did have the mid-year retreat, and there was a lengthy discussion on tax policy. And so I wanted to go ahead and summarize that, one as a reminder, and two, to let you know that we did take these assumptions in moving forward. They are incorporated into the fiscal year 14 budget. If you have any questions, specifically, it was the property tax, general sales tax that has been a discussion over the last couple of years, and the food tax. The budget is being put together under the goals-
Bill?
I'm sorry. Can you go back one slide? I debated to bring the question up or not, but we can discuss potential addition of another quarter percent reduction in the home consumption tax rate when we see the budget numbers in March and know a little bit more about what happened. And I remember that conversation very vividly, because I'd like to see that continue to drop. So rather than just kind of glossing over it, remember we talked about it and then move on. The numbers that I saw in the presentation, at least unless they've changed, look pretty favorable. And we haven't seen a dramatic effect at the federal level on what is happening. So I'm wondering, when is the time we're going to talk about that?
Mayor and Councilmember Stip, this is, this policy direction was specifically to get us a revenue projection for council. Certainly, if- Certainly, if council wants to relook at any of these policies, obviously it will have an impact on the revenue projections. But we can, this is certainly the time to start talking about those and to, as well as understand what those numbers are if any changes are made.
Joanne?
Well, and I appreciate that, Bill, that you brought that up. I was, was on your heels, but it's good that you brought it so quickly. I guess, I would certainly like us to have that discussion. We keep waiting to see when all the numbers, and I knew that this was the revenue side and next week we'll see the expense side and everything that's in front of us. But at the end of the day, you know, temporary is temporary and we have to have that discussion. And when does temporary become permanent in the eyes of citizens is what we need to discuss. I mean, I would love to see the food for home consumption tax rate get as far down as to 1% for that regard. But, you know, we still want to have that discussion and I appreciate you bringing it up, Bill.
Joe?
I would like this discussion broader and here's the reason why. Ebb and tide with the, with the economy. Things go up, things go down. When you reduce the food tax, no matter how much you reduce it, once it's down, it's down, it's done. Look what Phoenix is going through right now. But we've got a half a cent additional of the general sales tax, which affects much broader areas than just food. So, and again, it all depends on the revenue coming in. My concern from a strategy standpoint, and again, I might be in the minority and that's okay. But if we focus only on food, once that goes away, if for some reason you need additional revenue down the road, you ain't going to tack the additional half a cent. You're at two and a half, you're not going any higher than that. Look what's happening over in Glendale to do that. But if you drop the food and it gets down to one or even to zero, you're never going back and adding that food again, at least from my perspective. So I just think council's just got to keep that in mind, strategy-wise, as you move forward, that down long-term, you don't tie your hands. And again, that's just another perspective that I did want to share. That's why I think it's nice to have that overall strategy discussion kind of going forward.
Yeah, I agree with you totally on that. I'm very cautious about going down any lower on this grocery tax. It all sounds really good. And again, I don't want to find ourselves in the position that now we're going to have to cut some service because we dropped the grocery tax. And our stores are used by all cities and we are not the highest. So, you know, I think we made a valiant effort. I'm still in the future, and it doesn't look like this year, but that sales tax that we all looked at. And if I were going to focus on anything, I would focus on, and I can see now, I mean, looking that we can't do it this year. But that's the one I'd like to, to be concentrating on and kind of cross the board. I think that's a more fair look at our taxation than to just do away with the grocery bill. Because that does affect a lot of the businesses also. Joanne?
Well, and I think that we've had the discussion on the grocery food tax because that's been the smallest chunk that we've been able to continually eat at. And, I mean, really, at the end of the day, I think the good thing that we're doing is we're having, let's have the discussion of all the different types of tax, because not only sales tax, but then we have that, that restaurant tax that is the highest in the state. And we, we talk about that and even though it may be 20 years old, some people feel that it's still too high. And so I just think having those conversations at, at all levels. And I, and I agree, you know, the, the sales tax is the main sales tax, across-the-board sales tax, is something that we can only do a smidgen at a time. We probably can't drop a full quarter percent at once. I bet you that would be a huge number. And, but I know that we've had the discussion of point 10 or something like that. And it may not be this year, but I still have not given up on the grocery food tax because I think that's been the easiest one. And it affects every citizen in, in our city, besides just the outside people that shop in.
Yes, Sherry?
I, I think I kind of agree with, well, with Joe on this. I think we have to have the discussion on everything and see where each specific tax is going to go there. And what decreases it will have on your projections in the next, I think we need a plan, not necessarily a year-to-year plan, but maybe like a five-year type of plan on how we can reduce either this, the food tax, which is regressive, or the general sales tax, which does hit everything and probably might save our citizens more money, even if you took less off the general. My concern is, obviously still with the federal because they're all over the board. But my understanding is the state, once that education sales tax sets, the state has set itself up, if I'm correct, for basically another, a state fiscal cliff possibly for their budget in a year or so, that their, their revenues are going to decrease a lot. And if property taxes don't go up for the state, I don't know what the state's going to do to come after our general fund revenue. So I want to be very, very cautious and I'd rather be cautious and have a plan that we can at least let our citizens know we're looking at it and getting it off. Because I don't want to be in the Phoenix area where we're saying, oh, we're going to get rid of it. That's like, oh, well, we didn't plan for these other contingencies.
And I noticed on the revenue chart compared to 2007, 2008, we're not, you know, when we raised that tax, we're not anywhere near that yet. And so later on today is the presentation, my question is, what revenue number do we need to be looking, looking at? When can we kind of look at and say, oh, we might be able to do this at this point? So I kind of wanted a projection on that later tonight. You have a slide for it, so I'll wait till then. Bill?
You know, I didn't, I didn't start the dialogue to derail what we committed to in the fall. And that was, we would have the discussion, set the tax policy so that staff could execute a budget for this year. The, and I was okay with, I was okay with that process. We left the door open with this one. And, and if the answer's no, the answer's no, but at least I think we should at least have the dialogue. I'm not suggesting that we open the door on the other general sales tax or any of the other tax. And I think we're better served doing that in the fall every year to give staff the opportunity to build a budget. We can't come in here at the 11th hour and say, let's start doing all this other stuff.
You're right, you're right.
Joanne?
I, I guess I disagree because when we were having the discussion earlier, you wanted us to talk about tax without any figures. So we had no idea of saying, does this make sense to have this discussion, this, I'll agree now, yeah, you know what, we can go another quarter percent? Because we didn't know. We had no numbers to even look at. So now's the time that we have the numbers to look at, to then be able to have a educated discussion of, can we go down or not? I mean, and that was what was frustrating during the strategic planning, when we were supposed to talk about it, but we had no numbers to be able to really let us know that we could or could not do it. And that's why-
If you don't have the numbers, you don't have the numbers.
Well, right, right. But that's why it had to be now.
Yeah. I think that in a sense, when we do budgets, it's always a disadvantage to us. Because at, at the point in time we start a lot of these discussions, it's, the information is not out there yet. We don't have it and there's no way of getting it because it has to be, it has to be in the system, so.
But that's why it's now.
So I think everybody wants to discuss it within the limitations of where we are right now. So, go ahead, Terry.
With that, back to the policies. The policies were created a number of years ago and we update those annually with you and bring them back. They're fiscally conservative, they allow for some flexibility and we try to incorporate best management practices. Below there is listed the categories that the budget policies fall within. And the one, I kind of wanted to just bring your attention, we did make a change last year and that would be in the operating category here. And we did have four months of operating expenditures put back for the rainy day fund, if you will. And that was moved back to three months expenditures. And we also kept the amount, which I've built a budget moving forward with this amount, it's about $16 million. And the, the consensus at the time was we would keep that dollar amount the same until the expenditures, until we increased proportionally to that amount. So we've incorporated that moving forward. When we get to the expenditure side, you'll, you'll see that. The budget process today, there's been a lot going on behind the scenes. The departments actually started in January, February, putting their base budgets together, re-appropriating and reallocating some of their line items to get that more in line with where they're spending today. We also allowed for a supplemental process this year. I'm happy to say we had some, both available ongoing and one-time funding. And so we reviewed the, the budgets, the base budgets, the supplements, and then are just now finalizing the revenue projections, bringing those forward to you. And then, of course, we'll be balancing that out over the next couple of weeks. Here's just a history of general fund.
That's, that's, that's the one right there. This is the one I was commenting, I'm sorry, go ahead, Terry.
So as you can see, back in 2008, when growth was very, very strong, we were in double digits, we were up quite high there. And then I am happy to say that as we declined through 9, 10, we're back on pace. The budget for this year is 68. I will be getting into the budget for 14 and all of the components and then the drivers that are behind that. But I just wanted to show you a little historical perspective.
So just for comments on that, this is the slide I was talking about. And when you look at those revenues, they're certainly not up to where they need to be in order to, to look at, at that reduction in tax.
Bill was first, Bill.
Terry, this is the five-year history of all general fund revenues, which include construction sales tax as well as property tax. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You know, that's a good point that you brought up because we don't know about the construction sales tax with the TPT. So that could be a huge reduction in that. Joanne?
On, on this slide, could you break it, you don't have to say it tonight if you don't have it, but could you break it down for us of what the construction sales tax was in 2008? Is it coming up?
Yes.
Oh, I thought I looked at that. Okay. And remind me again, when exactly, I believe it was, I know it was in September when the, when we added on the sales tax, the half percent increase. Was that September of-
Half cent.
The half cent of '08? '09? Okay. So that '09, 64 million includes the beginning. Okay, thanks.
No, no.
It was September of 2009. That's fiscal year 2009, so the first year actually was 2010-
Okay.
That had any of it in there.
All right, thanks.
And just as, I happen to have the detail for the construction sales tax, in nine, it was 12, 12.2 million, so.
In nine, it was what?
In fiscal year nine, it was 12.2. So eight, of course, would have been higher than that even.
That, I would love to hear that number.
The magnitude of, yeah, change we've had over the last five or six years.
Joe?
Yeah, I would think the difference between '08 and '13 is the construction sales tax and the additional half a cent increase. Because we had almost, what, about 20 million construction sales tax in '08, pushing around there, wasn't it?
Yes, 20, 21 million is-
And this year, I mean, it's about six, so that's 15. Difference there is 14. So other than the half a cent, which, another 4 million or whatever that may be, that would be your difference between probably those '08 and '09. Most of it's construction sales tax and the new, new tax.
You're okay.
Just a comment.
And moving forward, here is kind of the composite of the projected general fund revenue for 14. It holds about 73 million. I will have a discussion on all the, the major revenue sources here coming up. Just want to point out that the, the regular sales tax is about 47%, so it is a good portion of the total amount. Construction sales tax is about 8%, estimated at 6 million, development-related about 6%. State shared is a good substantial portion too, it is increasing. We did very well in the census bump a couple of years ago. It represents about 21%. Property tax, again, this is only a portion of the property tax. The other part that Larry will talk about, this goes for general operations, it's about 7.2 or 10% tax. And then franchise free and other together add up to about 8%. And this is comparative year-over-year, so you can kind of see what is remaining stable and going up. We're estimating a little bit of an increase in other. I'll go ahead and tell you, that's all court fees. It is, franchise fees represent the most of the others, about 2.5 million, a little bit more than that. It's license and permits. There's a $400,000 in there for a CFT reimbursement that they pay to the general fund. We're doing quite well with the fire service fees, not only with the Litchfield Park agreement. Also in the other would be service agreements. They have a ride-along agreement where we're reimbursed for some expenses as well as the wildland fires that the troops go out on. Recreation fees are about 370 and we have interest, positive interest earnings also going in there. Property tax is up, right around 300,000. Development-related again is coming in strong. We're estimating that up about 700 right now. State shared again is doing well, to almost a million up. And then non-construction and construction sales tax both remain strong.
Sherry?
And just for people who are watching this, and if you could be clear about the property taxes, how far they lag behind? Because people see all these houses now being sold again. If you could explain that.
Oh, Larry scored, sorry.
We'll go into that in just a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
Joe?
Terry, if I read this correctly, we've got about $3 million worth of new money, operating money going forward, less 700,000. That's going to be used for one time because that goes into the ballpark fund. Am I, does that leave us about 2.3 million? Is that correct there?
Of ongoing money?
Yes.
And I apologize, I don't have the number, but it's a little bit less because of that ballpark.
Well, that's what I mean. I'm looking at the 63.9 and the 67 is roughly $3 million of new, ongoing money. And then you subtract the 700,000 out, that leaves us about roughly 2.3 million of new one-time money, so to speak. What I'd like, as we kind of go forward into the budget, if you can just break it out by categories, what's making up that 2.3? You may have some savings in one area and some of it may be water, some of it may be fuel, some of it may be electricity. But where that 2.3 is going, as we get farther along in the, it doesn't have to be now, as we get farther along in the budget process, where that 2.3 gets allocated, because some of it's going to be employees, et cetera, so that would be helpful.
Certainly, Councilman Pizzillo. And yeah, next week, we are outlining that on the expenditure side, so I'll make sure that we have the notes on the revenues that are supporting that. Overall, that change is a little more than 4%. Again, when we put the projections together, we use a number of sources, we are consistent with the state estimators. We use a number of publications that are out from economists. And so we're in line with a lot of what the other valley cities are doing, as well as the city of Phoenix and Maricopa County, state of Arizona. This is a chart on single-family permits. And as you can see, again, it's the same thing way back in 2006, '07, we were up there. We are doing quite well this year. The estimate is right over 1,000 permits, 1,078. Moving forward, we're estimating 1,200, 1,300 for 15 and up to 1,500 for 16. So this area is, is coming back and we're doing, we're doing well here. And you'll see that on the revenue side and the development, development-related revenues. This is non-construction sales tax. Again, as we were speaking about, in 2010, you'll see the spike and that is the additional half cent that was approved. It does remain strong. We've been as volatile as some of the other areas.
Bill?
Now, I understand this is the combination of all of the tax. But if in 2008, we were only collecting 22.6 million and today we're estimating 32.8, that looks to me like $10 million of additional sales tax that we're collecting.
Correct. And then the, in 2010, you'll see the differential there is going to be the percent increase.
Is going to be the increase. So at some point in time, we need to return to pre-point-five basis. I'm not, I don't know when that is, but this is the slide that shows how that is really, I'm going to use the word juice in the budget, but it's really providing the, you know, the major strength to it. So I think going forward, this is what we, this is the other side of what we have to be careful of.
And now we want to be sure we realize what it's providing, okay? So when you keep that number and they start showing us, okay, this is what you're going to get out of this number. So that's the point which you can say to yourself, oh, do I want to cut that or do I want to cut that? So, Sherry?
Yeah, I totally see what Bill is saying. When I, when I look at this, it does go up. But then I go back to the other slide, if, maybe if we could put the property tax next to this because I think that's, the property tax is down here. So I think when they both are up is what I'm looking for, is them both being up at that higher plane. Does that make sense?
Oh, I agree.
Or am I misreading something?
Do you see what we're talking about to show, to show us on a slide, to kind of give us that comparison?
That looks great.
Right.
Okay?
This, yeah, this looks awesome.
Yeah.
It's the other stuff that we need to show.
And I don't know how you do that, because I'm not that good.
Probably a matulation too.
I think it really helped.
Joe?
Just real quick, though, when you're looking at some of those spikes too, the ballpark, both, both teams came on full boat, was it 10 or 11?
10.
10. So you got to keep in mind, the full boat of that, that 7 million, whatever that number happens to be, was in in 10. that number happens to be, was in in ten, not in nine or eight. So that's part of where that's going. And you still have the current services. So you've got to keep that in mind when you see that spike from twenty-two to thirty-two. It's not as big of a spike as you
As you think.
As you think, because you still have your general government services, you know, in there, and you had the spike of the ballpark. So just keep that in mind.
I think showing those three things together makes this conversation almost go away, but it also tells the story to everybody who's, who's got it.
And great points. I would add one other one. We also had a census that was completed. And we have experienced increases because of our population growth as well. So our state shared revenues have gone up significantly as a result of that. So there, there are several things that really impact that.
Right. Well, and that's something maybe we need on the same information that you're going to be giving us, so we can have kind of a glance of, we're giving you this formula we'd like to see.
Right.
Go ahead, Terry.
And the other component in our sales tax is the construction sales tax. As you can see, much more volatile. And we are, we're estimating a little bit over budget this year. And most of that is there's some major projects going on at three oh three and I-ten interchange. And so that has helped boosting the sales tax. For this year, the project will be, I don't know if it'll be complete, but it seems to be front-loaded, and we're going to gain more this year than next year on that. So the estimate is about six million for next year. And with that, I will turn it over to Larry for a property tax discussion.
Any other questions for, before she turns it over? Okay. Larry?
Okay, thank you. I will try to keep this at a high level, but if I skip, no, you can turn them for me if you will. If I skip over your questions, or if we don't get to them, we'll do, we'll make, please make sure you stop me. First, in the primary property tax levy, the budget policy that has been established is that we will levy the maximum primary allowable, which is the two percent increase each year. So the primary property tax levy in fiscal year thirteen is about six point seven million dollars. And for fiscal year fourteen, that goes up to seven million dollars. Secondary property tax levy is the amount necessary to pay the debt service on the GO bonds that are for general government purpose. No water or sewer GO bonds are included in there. So fiscal year thirteen, that's ten point seven million dollars. Fiscal year fourteen, that gives you a total then of eleven point one million dollars. We've got a four hundred thousand dollar increase in the property tax levy that we are proposing as we go through this upcoming year. Sixty-five percent of that increase in revenue will come from new construction that's been built over, over the, over, I was going to say over the past year, but that's where I get to Council Member Loretano's comments earlier. The fiscal year fourteen tax levy amount is really for activity that took place during calendar year two thousand eleven. So it was as of date, January first of two thousand twelve. So the new construction that I'm talking about was added to the tax rolls by January first of two thousand twelve. And that is what added the two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that I, that I just discussed. Next sheet then. So a little history, giving a five-year history of the tax levy. Fiscal year two thousand ten, that tax levy was approximately fourteen point nine million dollars, decreased significantly in fiscal year eleven. And then fiscal years twelve and thirteen, both years were approximately ten point seven million dollars. Each of those were decreases from the prior year, although I would say fiscal year thirteen at zero point zero three percent is close enough to call break even. Fiscal year fourteen, as we're proposing, would be a four percent increase in the city property tax rate. One of the budget policies that was discussed earlier was to maintain a floating rate. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of slides. But the property tax rate used to be maintained at a dollar sixty, went to a dollar seventy-seven last year due to the decline in assessed valuation. And this year, we're actually proposing at a dollar ninety.
Joe?
Just probably a comment. In, in eleven, is it, is it true that the reason for the big drop, Larry, isn't that when we started switching over the debt service that was in the property tax, that was covering our water and sewer bonds? So now the enterprise fund was taking, carrying its own load now and paying its own debt service. So that was, I guess, the main cause for those drops? Is that, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. That was the year that we did the most of that, of that shift. A little bit happened previously to that. Some of the other drops that we've been able to accomplish that we're running out of, although I'll talk a little bit, we still have some benefit filtering through for fiscal year fourteen. But we've been able to do some refinancing of our GO bonds in the past couple of years. And those have helped us keep that levy lower. Those refinancings did not extend out the terms, but took advantage of lower interest rates. And by doing that, we were able to keep the total levy at a lower amount for twelve and thirteen particularly.
Joe?
Also, the, what is it, how we levied the commercial was as, as high as, what, twenty-five at one point, right?
Correct.
And now it's down to nineteen, nineteen and a half?
For fiscal year fourteen, it's nineteen point five.
Okay, so that's
For fiscal year thirteen, it was twenty.
Okay, so it's been dropping all along. Not only is the commercial property, because that always lags, their assessed valuations have been dropping. The other whammy is, is the percentage that they're being assessed is also going down as well.
Correct.
So I, I just think that's an important note to let the taxpayers know as well. We've got that working against.
That's the state.
And that's the state that does, does that.
And that's their, that's their answer to economic development, to, to, you know, to creating a stronger business side of it.
When does, I'm sorry, Georgia, when does that with the state end? I know that there was a
I've got it here. I thought someone would ask, so my staff has me very well prepared. If I could keep it in order, I'd have even been better prepared. There it is. It goes to eighteen percent for, through December thirty-one of two thousand fifteen. And that's the tax year. So that's fiscal year two thousand sixteen that it hits that level. One of the strategies, just from, and this is my perspective of a hundred years watching this stuff, the, the commercial valuation was at twenty-five, as you know, down to eighteen by fiscal year two thousand sixteen. But the residential's at ten percent. And so there's, it's looked at as an equity, the business incentive that the mayor referred to just a few minutes ago, at the eighteen, at the twenty-five percent was felt to be too high of a tax burden to bring businesses into the state. And when they actually had this legislation, as I recall, they were trying to go further with it, and this was the compromise.
We're shifting residential, and they're trying to bring it more even, not quite even, but more equal in value.
The, the impact that happens, though, is that when you, when every, everything's at a certain level, and you shift how one's assessed with your tax levy, that is a shift from the one over to the other. So there is a shift over to residential.
Somebody has to pay the bills.
It, it, it's the only way it balances. And that's just the math of it. Okay. And including the proposed rate for fiscal year fourteen, we wanted to just show you quickly a breakdown of the rate between the primary rate and the secondary rate. The primary rate has increased dramatically, just to maintain that two percent growth as we get into the assessed valuation dropping, whereas the secondary rate decreased from fiscal year ten's level due to a lot of the shift of the enterprise fund debt over, as discussed earlier. So if we go to the next slide, now we're going to start talking a little bit about assessed valuation. The city of Goodyear's assessed valuation for fiscal year two thousand nine was just barely over a billion dollars. And as, as everything dropped down, you can see that we've gotten to a level just slightly below six hundred million dollars. There's been a forty percent drop in our assessed valuation. During that same timeframe, there's actually been new construction added. Not as rapidly as it was previously, but it's been added in over the years. The actual values, I think, of existing property dropped even further in that timeframe. This, I, I, I hope from many standpoints is good news. Information from the Treasurer's Office, our preliminary estimates for next year are that our assessed valuation is going to start increasing.
Okay, I have a question. Okay, we got the tax bill, it's one of forty thousand dollars. Okay?
Assessed valuation.
Okay, so now when are we, when are we going to see that?
Okay.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
If you look in the gray area there on the right side, the shaded area, excuse me, we'll ignore what color it is to protect my lack of ability to
Light blue.
Light blue?
Sounds better than the gray area.
Yes. The, those are our estimates moving forward. But the fiscal year fifteen estimates, we actually received information from the Maricopa County Assessor as the basis for those estimates. Residential, on average, went up, and this is what, what you're referring to, you're above average, because citywide, the average was sixteen percent increase.
It's all timing while we build.
So sixteen percent growth in residential assessed valuation is coming in, in fiscal year fifteen. Commercial, interestingly, increased by a little over three percent in, in valuation. Okay? And that's full cash value, by the way. That's not net of nineteen and a half percent, but the full cash value, it actually increased. But residential increased considerably quicker. Again, throughout this, and I don't want to make it sound completely like commercial is getting by easy, because also, when the residential was dropping rapidly, commercial was holding. It didn't start dropping. It always lags a little bit. We were one of three areas, though, in Maricopa County where our commercial assessed, full cash value was actually increasing. So that was a good, good thing for us to see. So we are expecting, we've taken after that, you'll notice we have an arrow there for Proposition one seventeen. I will not go into the nuances of that with you this evening unless you ask. So that's at your own risk.
Can you give me just a hint?
Proposition one seventeen was the voter initiative that was approved two years ago that basically, or no, it's this last election, excuse me. Time flies. Basically, what it does is, as we go through the calculations and we show you a primary levy and a secondary levy, each of those had a separate value. And there was a primary assessed valuation and a secondary assessed valuation. What Proposition one seventeen did is put all of that into the primary assessed valuation. You'll still have a secondary levy, but it'll be based on the primary assessed valuation. What that is, is a limited growth per year. And when that starts, that limits the growth in your property to five percent.
I remember that now.
Now, I, I just told you a couple of minutes ago, the sky's falling, oh, just told you a couple of minutes ago, that average residential went up sixteen and a half percent. Had Proposition one seventeen been in effect, that would have taken into the fourth year before all of that would have been absorbed. What does happen, though, is the primary is already limited under today's statutes. It's limited at ten percent. And so that growth in fiscal year fifteen will go up ten percent, even though the average was sixteen and a half. Then the next year, the secondary shifts over to the primary. And so that's where you actually see that curve slightly even to maybe even down. That's taking that into account. What that'll do, besides complicate things, the simple part of this is, forget all the math and everything, what that's really intended to do is to level out the spikes and the peaks. So when things go up in value twenty percent in one year, and then the next, next year they go down, no, it's, what you see there is a more level line of growth that we'll have. And a lot of our growth will be more based on new construction. Then it'll be based on increase in the value of the property. Whereas if you were to look at that line prior to fiscal year nine, that shot up pretty, that looked a little closer to a rocket as, as it was shooting up. That's because values per property were increasing more significantly. Really, in the long term, and I think that's what the voters recognized, is, is that'll give a sense of stability as we move forward. Next one, please. So we looked at two different scenarios for this upcoming budget. But the primary one, the difference between these two, excuse me. In the floating column, the pure floating rate would be two dollars and one cent, two point oh one three oh, to use the floating rate this year. However, because of the refinancings that we've done, we've got sufficient cash in the debt service fund, and this is all this cash can be used for, to pay that down about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so we're proposing one dollar and ninety cent property tax rate with a, that'll give us a secondary tax levy of four dollar, or, excuse me, of four point one million dollars. Our debt service needs will be four point eight million dollars. We'll use that cash to pay the difference, but that puts your total levy at the eleven point one million dollars that I showed you in a couple of slides. So if we go over to the next one, what does that mean to our typical house? The median family, or the median home value, and again, let me point out, this is for fiscal year fourteen. When we showed the values and talked a few minutes about values going up, that's for fiscal year fifteen. Fiscal year fourteen, our values were still dropping. And residential, as I recall, dropped five to eight percent in Goodyear that particular year. So the median home went from a hundred and twenty-four thousand down to a hundred and nineteen eight. Using the proposed rate that we're putting in, that'll increase it from one point seven seven five zero to one point nine zero zero, increase the property tax on that median family home from two hundred dollars and twenty-eight cents to two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. The other day, when I ran through that calculation with people that speak English a lot better than I do and keep things simple, they equated it on their mortgage payment that that's going to go up sixty-one cents a month. And with that, that's all we have, both property taxes, revenues. Any further questions? We're happy to take them here.
Sherry?
When you're talking about the lagging on the property tax, when do you get the, when do we start getting good news? And how far ahead of time do you start getting the good news for, that shows it goes up? We know it's coming, we just don't know when.
The estimates that I was referring to are coming from Maricopa County. So they have given us an analysis already. This is very high level. This isn't, they, they still do a lot of things with it and massage it. For example, last year, when they gave us that estimate, our actual numbers came in about twenty million dollars lower than the estimate they gave us. That's still three percent. Okay? So they gave us their estimate for this year, and this next year, we do start going up. Okay? And so what we're projecting as we move forward is that probably next year, because we won't have as much cash available for the levy, probably next year, we would be at a dollar ninety also. And then from there, the rate will start going down. And I believe it's the, I don't have this in front of me, but I believe it's about the fourth year out, that we will be back to the dollar sixty.
So just so to simplify it, as values go up, the rates go down?
That's correct.
I guess that's the simplest way to say it.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Larry. Appreciate the presentation. I think we got a lot out of that tonight, and a lot of questions answered. So thank you. Now, what we're going to do is, we're going to adjourn this meeting. You can have a break. And we've had it set so it doesn't matter what time we start. So five minutes, is that enough for you, or a little bit more?
Five.
Ten minutes? Is the other, any nods to ten minutes?
There's none.
All right, we'll take ten minutes. It's now six ten, so that's at six twenty.